All right, I call to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two at six thirty P M. The city of Gladstone is abiding by guidelines set forth in House Bill twenty-five sixty, which requires we make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means and provide the opportunity for the general public to participate to the best of our ability. Therefore, this meeting will be open to the public both in person and virtually using the Zoom platform. The council members and staff will be in person in our council chambers, as well as those citizens that wish to attend in person. The Zoom access instructions can be found on the meeting agenda. Public comment requests were accepted prior to noon today and were to include your topic and phone number. Because hybrid meetings are challenging, please be patient. If folks become disruptive, we will pause the meeting. If that fails to stop the disruption, we will recess the meeting and remove them from the chambers. If we are unable to continue, council will move unfinished business to the next council agenda. Tonight, we will begin with the presentation recognizing the accomplishments of two staff members, Kathy Brucker, our finance consultant, and John Schmerber, our police chief. This will be followed by the consent agenda, which includes approval of the April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting minutes, approval of the March bank balances, budget report for periods ending March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, approval of the March check register, legal costs on projects, department head monthly reports for April, two thousand and twenty-two. Our regular meeting agenda includes item seven, which is resolution one-two-zero-nine, a budget adjustment on funds for the public works facility project. Item eight, which is the Gladstone Community Festival Agreement. Item nine A, which is to consider approving ordinance one-five-one-four amending provisions of the Gladstone Municipal Code, also referred to as the GMC, to conform to provisions of the two thousand and twenty-two Gladstone City Charter, modifying a limited number of inaccurate state statutory citations of authority. Item nine B is to provide staff, to provide staff the process for conforming provisions of the two thousand and twenty-two Gladstone City Charter with the city council rules, resolution one-one-two-nine. Item ten is appointment to the Gladstone Park and Rec Advisory Committee, and item eleven is appointment to the City of Gladstone Planning Commission. Tammy, could you please call the roll? Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Present.
Counselor Hartman?
Here.
Counselor Todd?
Here.
Counselor Garlington?
Here.
Mayor Stimple? Here. Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? This is not working. My glasses keep fogging up. Are there any agenda additions or corrections?
I have none. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, so the first item is the consent agenda. Do we have any questions or concerns? I don't see any. Would somebody like to make a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion was made by Counselor Hartman, seconded by Counselor Garlington to approve the consent agenda. Do we have any additional questions or concerns? I don't see any. Could you do a roll call vote, please? Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Aye.
Counselor Hartman?
Aye.
Counselor Todd?
Aye.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple? Yes, consent agenda has passed. Do we have any correspondence?
I have nothing.
All right, before we start, I would like to say first, for those folks that would like to speak, the deadline to accept comments was noon today. And as a reminder, we allow three minutes for public comment. Second, as I do before every meeting, I would like to say a few words regarding the city council. The most important limitation we have sitting here is that we are representing the citizens of Gladstone, not our own personal agendas and beliefs. There have been many times when a decision being made doesn't align with what we would like personally, but it made a decision based on what is best for the city as a whole. That doesn't mean our personal beliefs have changed, just that the city's needs were more important. As we discuss and consider matters, there are laws and rules we have to use as the basis of our decisions. They start at the federal state level, then filter down to our city's comprehensive plan, city charter, codes, and ordinances. We do not have the luxury of randomly making decisions, but instead have to be consistent and take the path that is defensible. So we're going to start with the presentation, an employee recognition presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members of the public. Our employees are our greatest asset, and we must highlight their successes. When I first began my career in local government, I was mentored by a city manager who implemented the Apple Awards. These awards were given to employees who go above and beyond for their community. Well, those who know me well know that I'm all about pineapples, not really apples. In fact, we even have a code word that if I say it, Operation Pineapple, the fire chief and police chief know exactly what I'm talking about. Therefore, I'm putting a twist on my mentors' apple awards and implementing the Gladstone Pineapple Awards. It signifies wisdom, well-being, welcomeness, and deep appreciation for dedication to the organization. Tonight, there are two members of the Gladstone management team we would like to recognize, and I'd like to ask Kathy Brucker to please come up.
That's awesome.
Kathy has been with Gladstone for over four years. She is what we call a permanent interim finance director, coming to the rescue of the city when our finance position was vacant. Even though she is not technically an employee, she is part of our city family. We are fortunate to have Kathy for another year before she retires. Kathy has implemented professional standards and best practices for the city of Gladstone. Our audits are clean, our biennium budget processes are fluid and transparent. She assisted the city with borrowing and structuring affordable debt so we can build the thirteen-point-five-million-dollar civic center and now a new five-million-dollar public works facility. She is currently implementing a five-year financial forecasting program for the city so we can estimate future revenues and expenditures appropriately to achieve fiscal viability. And she assisted us with negotiations on the contract for fire and emergency services. This year, she is also working on a banking services proposal and will help the city hire a new auditor. Most recently, the Government Finance Officers Association recognized Kathy by presenting her with the Lifetime Achievement Award for her outstanding career in finance. It is an incredible honor to be recognized by peers across the state of Oregon, and we would like to show our appreciation by presenting Kathy with the inaugural Gladstone Pineapple Award. Okay. Next, I would like to ask Police Chief John Schmerber to come up here. Chief Schmerber is celebrating three years with the organization this month. He has an incredible ability to lead and manage the Gladstone Police Department and inspires confidence in his employees. He developed a vision that enhanced accountability, integrity, and professionalism, and established himself as a trusted and respected leader in the department, citywide, in the community, and at the state level, which I will share in a moment. This past year, Chief has done an exceptional job in emergency management, traffic safety and awareness, enhancing partnerships in the community, managing competing crowds during demonstrations for over five weeks, and most recently mentoring his staff to develop a curriculum for the forthcoming Gladstone Community Academy. But by far, the most exemplary leadership he displayed was during our recent officer-involved shooting. Officer-involved shootings are the most stressful experiences in law enforcement, and he handled it with professionalism, compassion, and empathy. As the police chief, he provided strong support by ensuring that licensed incompetent personnel were available to assist the officers involved, their families, and the rest of the department. The support helped manage the stressors, emotions, and pressures experienced by the event. With the chief's guidance, we are grateful that Sergeant Hill and Officer Lau are safe and back to work. Recently, the Oregon Association Chiefs of Police recognized Chief Schmerber for his service on the Board of Directors. He was thanked for his outstanding and dedicated service to the city of Gladstone and the state of Oregon, which is a prestigious honor. So please help me congratulate Chief Schmerber by recognizing him with this Gladstone Pineapple Award.
You're awesome. All right, thank you. First item on our regular agenda is item seven, to consider approving resolution one-two-zero-nine, which is a bus budget adjustment on funds for the public works facility project. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor, city council. We will ask our finance consultant Kathy Brucker to walk you through the staff report.
Thank you, Jackie, Mayor and council. Once again, council is being requested to amend the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-three biennium budget for impacts unknown at the time the budget was adopted. Excuse me. On November second, two thousand and twenty-one, the voters approved the construction of the public works facility and the necessary incurrence of five million dollars in associated debt. On April twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, the city entered into a full faith and credit financing for the five million with Chase Bank. The interest rate is two-point-five-four percent payable over eighteen years. Payment of this debt will be financed by twenty-two-and-a-half percent payments from the roads, sewer, water, and stormwater funds, with ten percent provided by the Parks Department within the general fund. All amounts will be offset by capital outlay within each department and fund. Oregon budget law allows certain exceptions for budget resolution increases, and the impact to resources for voter-approved debt within the current fiscal year is one of them. Transfers between the appropriation categories are also included to adequately budget for the construction and the debt service expenditures. Therefore, staff is requesting the following: that you recognize the full faith and credit series two thousand and twenty-two acquisition of debt proceeds, recognize the appropriation of the proceeds for construction, and recognize the subsidy of the debt from other funds along with the semi-annual principal and interest payments due within the current biennium. These actions are necessary to utilize the funding and remain in compliance with Oregon budget law sections two-nine-four-point-three-point-oh-five to two-nine-four-point-five-six-five. Finally, staff recommends adoption of resolution number twelve-oh-nine to increase the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-three biennium budget by five million, three hundred and sixty-three-thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars to a total of sixty-two million, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars as permitted by O R S two-nine-four-point-three-three-eight and two-nine-four-point-four-six-three. So are there any questions about this?
Counselor Garlington, questions or concerns?
No questions, no concerns.
Counselor Ripley?
No questions.
Counselor Todd?
No questions, thank you.
Counselor Alexander?
None, thank you.
Counselor Hartman?
None for me, thank you.
And Counselor Tracy?
No questions, thanks.
All right, would somebody like to make a motion, please? And it's on seven dash two. All right.
I make a motion that we in that we
Adopt.
that we adopt the resolution number one-two-zero-nine to increase the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-three biennium budget by five million, three hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars to a total of sixty-two million, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars as permitted by O R S two-nine-four-point-three-three-eight and two-nine-four-point-four-six-three.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Counselor Garlington and seconded by Counselor Tracy. Do we have any more questions or concerns? I don't see anything. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please? Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Aye.
Counselor Tracy?
Aye.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple? Yes, resolution one-two-zero-nine has passed. Next is item number eight, which is the Gladstone Community Festival Agreement.
Thank you, Mayor, city council. We're very excited to have this application back before us. We haven't had the festival in a couple of years due to the pandemic. We have our community festival organizers here that are going to talk to you about what's in store for the festival. And if you have any questions about the agreement, then staff is here to help answer those.
All right, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. It's been a few years since I've sat up here and discussed this. And so we're happy to be back. We're happy to be able to put this on again this year. We hope that we'll get a large crowd. I think we will, and we also hope that people enjoy it. We've got a few changes this year, not too drastic. First, most of you know Bryce, too, so, and he is the chairman. I am simply the vendor coordinator. But I'll let Bryce sort of talk about some of the changes this year rather than, you know, than in the years past. So you want to?
Sure.
So, okay.
So one of the things we got going this year is that we're changing it from the time in the park in Max Patterson is only going to be Friday and Saturday. There is still going to be the car show down on Portland Avenue, but we won't be having our part in the park on Sunday. We have the same entertainment and whatnot coming back with the stage, and we'll have some bands coming. We got the Beer Garden, and we're going to be moving that a little more centrally this year. And we got some cool stuff coming for that. What am I missing, Ben?
We also have a kids' zone, so we have, we're hoping to get a sponsorship for, you know, some kids' events, things like that. And we are, we're sort of aiming from the vendor standpoint to look for people that have crafts, a few more crafts types of things, hopefully, you know, local and around the other area, from other areas then, too. Our hours are a little different. We're going to start at
Noon on Friday, and then ten o'clock on Saturday, and we'll be going till midnight both nights with vendors there till eight o'clock.
Right, and we are having, planning on having the movie in the park. And, you know, as I say, it's similar to the years before, just a little bit shorter, just not on Sunday, so.
And a thank you to the city for sponsoring the movie.
Yes, and the city for always helping us out. I think that's the, I don't know, one of the greatest things I appreciate is how much support the city has given us over the years. And any questions or?
Counselor Garlington?
Nope, I'm just super excited, and the date is in pen on my calendar.
All right.
There we go.
And again, it's the first weekend in August, I should say that. That's August fifth and sixth.
All right, Counselor Ripley?
I don't have any questions.
Counselor Todd?
Will there be a parade?
I'm hoping so, but maybe you ask a mirror.
There will be a parade.
Yes, all right, okay, well, we've certainly got a good chairman of that, that's for sure, so, yeah.
Right, Counselor Alexander?
No questions, thanks.
Counselor Hartman?
I have no questions, thank you.
Counselor Tracy?
No questions.
All right, thank you for not doing it on Sunday. That always seemed to be a challenge with the car show going on.
We didn't get a lot of events and a lot of people there, and we just thought it was much simpler than two. Gosh, you guys didn't grill us on anything, so.
I think people are just excited.
I know. We're glad to be having it back.
Yeah, anyway, thanks so much.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, well, we need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we authorize the city administrator to sign the Gladstone Community Festival Agreement with the Gladstone Oak Grove Rotary Club for the dates of August fifth through sixth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Made by Counselor Hartman and seconded in tandem by Counselor Hartman and Counselor Todd. Do we have any other questions? Yes.
Are we going to see another something for the car show then on Sunday?
So what I will share with you is the reason why you have an agreement for the festival in the city is because there are in-kind services that the city provides for that.
Okay.
There are multiple events happening that weekend. Specifically, you have the used book sale at John Wetton Pickleball Tournament. There's a high school reunion being planned, Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast, and there's the history of the Gladstone Chautauqua. I'm not sure, is that part of the festival or is that separate?
We plan on having them give a presentation, and they said they might have some fun stuff.
Okay. So.
So to answer your question, though, Counselor Garlington, is they fill out special events licenses that are approved administratively, so this is the only agreement that will come to the city council for approval?
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please? Counselor Todd?
Aye.
Counselor Hartman?
Aye.
Counselor Tracy?
Aye.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple? Yes. Yay, community festival. Yeah, awesome. All right, next is item nine A, which is to consider approving ordinance one-five-one-four, which is amending provisions of the Gladstone Municipal Code, also referred to as the GMC, to conform to provisions of the two thousand and twenty-two Gladstone City Charter, modifying a limited number of inaccurate state statutory citations of authority. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to have our city attorney Chad Jacobs walk you through the staff report.
Thank you, Jackie. Good evening, Mayor, members of the councils. For the record, Chad Jacobs from the city attorney's office. As the mayor just presented, this is an ordinance that's being brought to you. It's basically a cleanup ordinance. It's not really making any substantive changes. As you know, the voters approved the new charter for the city of Gladstone last November. Because of that, references, statutory references within the municipal code were no longer accurate. So Paul Elsner from our office worked with city recorder Tammy Vannick to do an audit of the code to find those references and update them accordingly. While they were doing that, they also found some outdated statutory references to the Oregon revised statutes, and so those were updated as well. So the ordinance before you just updates those references, doesn't make any substantive changes, and conforms the municipal code with the new charter. I will say that as much faith and respect that I have for Tammy and Paul, in my experience, there's often times where something may have gotten missed. And so don't be surprised if we come back to you somewhere down the road with another update. But for the most part, we think we've captured everything here, and this should get the charter in line with, excuse me, the municipal code in line with the charter. The one remaining thing which we'll talk about next in item nine B is then conforming your council rules to the updated charter. But we'll talk about that after you talk about this ordinance. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and staff is recommending approval of the proposed ordinance fifteen-fourteen.
All right, Counselor Garlington?
Well, I know that big stuff is far more fun than the little stuff and the housekeeping, as you call it, behind the scenes. So I really appreciate you doing that just so that when people are reading things, it's very clear about, you know, what they're reading and if they do need to reference anything that they have a clear path for that reference. So I appreciate your time and all your efforts, both Tammy and Paul, for taking care of this housekeeping.
All right, Counselor Ripley?
I have no questions.
Counselor Todd?
I have no questions, thank you.
Counselor Alexander?
None, thanks.
Counselor Hartman?
No, thank you.
And Counselor Tracy?
No questions.
All right, then I would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance one-five-one-four.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance one-five-one-four, an ordinance amending provisions of the Gladstone Municipal Code to conform to provisions of the two thousand and twenty-two Gladstone City Charter and modify a limited number of inaccurate state statutory citations of authority.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counselor Hartman and seconded by Counselor Alexander. Do we have any further questions or concerns? I don't see any. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please? Counselor Tracy?
Aye.
Counselor Hartman?
Aye.
Counselor Todd?
Aye.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple? Yes, ordinance one-five-one-four has passed. Next is item nine.
Mayor Stimple, now, since it passed unanimously, you can go ahead and do a second reading tonight.
All right, would somebody like to make a motion for the second reading of ordinance one-five-one-four amending provisions of the Gladstone Municipal Code to conform to provisions of the two thousand and twenty-two Gladstone City Charter, modifying a limited number of inaccurate state statutory citations of authority?
So moved.
Second.
Second reading, motion was made by Counselor Tracy and seconded by Counselor Garlington. Do we have any other questions or concerns? I don't see any. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please? Counselor Tracy?
Aye.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Aye.
Counselor Todd?
Aye.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple? Yes, the second and final reading has been approved for ordinance one-five-one-four. Next is item nine B to provide staff direction on the process for conforming provisions of the two thousand and twenty-two Gladstone City Charter with the city council rules, resolution one-one-two-nine. Staff?
Chad, do you want me to start on this one, or do you want to discuss?
It's completely up to you. I thought you guys were going to do it, but I can certainly jump in if you want me to.
Okay, well, just briefly, what I will introduce to the public is that in your packet, in order for us to take the new Gladstone City Charter to see if it conforms with the city council rules, there are some policy directions that we need for staff to do that. Listed in your packet are those policy discussions. The first of which I will say is that in section ten of the new charter, it states that in every odd number year, the city council must adopt rules to govern its meetings. Meetings is only one section of the city council rules. And so therefore, in January of two thousand and twenty-three, the city council is required to review its rules on how it governs its meetings. Our question to you tonight is, do you want to embark on this journey starting this summer through the end of this year, knowing that we also have to do it in two thousand and twenty-three? Or does the city council want to wait until two thousand and twenty-three goal-setting session to work on this project? So that's the first direction that staff needs.
All right, Counselor Garlington?
So I was just wondering how far off is the charter to the council rules? How many issues are there that are blatant? I don't, that's kind of a strong word, I don't. Difference, that there's a difference.
There are four blatant areas highlighted in your staff report. We're estimating that it could take about three months to work on those, and that's if you're consistently meeting starting in July twenty-first. Now, as we dive into this, as Chad alluded to, there may be things deeper that we have to find. And specifically, I sent you an email communication yesterday from a former city council that was questioning the guidebook that was adopted in two thousand and thirteen. So there's many layers of the onion that we would have to unpeel to determine how many of these conforming issues we have. We know of four of them. And that's why we really want to discuss about, if you want to do this, you can create a subcommittee of citizens to do that, but to create a sub- But to create a subcommittee of the city council needs to first be amended in your city council rules to do that. So all of you either have to do this as a body or you could do, um, a citizen review committee to start on this project.
Okay, well, I'm not one to kick the can down the road, but I will, um, I, I would like to hear from everyone and come to a majority of how we feel like whether it needs to be done or can we live with what we've got for six months and not getting it into any trouble or six, yeah, six, seven months and not get into any, you know, come, have issues come up that are going to bite us later on or even sooner than later. And like I said, you know, just hear what everybody else has to say and decide whether or not we want to dive in or we're going to just hold off until January.
Counselor Ripley?
I think my thought would be having the community involved with it. The community being involved with it would give people more involvement in the community, plus it would all, it, things look a bit different when you're making up rules for yourself versus if somebody else, the community's making up how they want council rules to be. Now, we could, if, if it was just a council working on it, I'd say we changed the name to council instead of council rules, council suggestions, because we don't even, we don't, we have no enforcement. We don't track any of these rules anyway. So I think it'd be better to have the community do that.
Do you want to wait and do it as part of the twenty twenty three strategic plan or start on it this summer?
I think I'd go along with many saying we, we have to stop kicking the can. Every time we, every time something comes up, we always want to put it off and put it off instead of just getting stuff done. So I'd rather see it just get done.
Okay. Counselor Todd?
Um, I agree with, uh, Counselor Ripley on having citizen involvement, uh, community member involvement in this. Um, I am concerned about starting it now if it's going to be more leaning on the council since we will have four seats that will be up, um, in the fall. So that could sort of, uh, potentially change some staff. Um, I would love if the former counselor who drew this to our attention, Mr. Michael Milch, if he would be involved with a citizen review of this. He seemed to have a lot of, um, good points and, and was pretty clear with that. So if you're watching, Mr. Milch, uh, I, I'm, I would like to get started on it probably sooner rather than later, as long as it's community.
Okay. Counselor Alexander?
I guess on the opposite. I made a note after I read it that, uh, since we have to review it again in twenty twenty three, um, and we've already got our, you know, council goals for twenty two, why wouldn't we just wait six more months and, you know, go that route? So that was my thought on it.
Okay, Counselor Hartman?
Uh, just a clarification, if I'm understanding correctly, if we start in July, it'll take three months to fix the four things. But if we wanted, if we want to have a citizen involvement and we just need to amend that one thing, is that a possibility? So it's like you said, we have to amend something, you know, so that we don't have to do the rules?
I, I wouldn't suggest that you convene a committee to amend one item in the council rules. So I would suggest that if you're going to convene a committee, which means advertising, appointing, and all of that, which will take about a month to do that, that you assign them with unraveling what we need to do to make sure that our new charter conforms with the city council rules. As part of that process, they would also be looking at the guidebook that may or may not still be a piece of authority under the city council rules. I also want to highlight that the areas that are called out in your staff packet aren't any areas where of substantance where the city council is, uh, potentially getting themselves into trouble. These are all areas where we have never had an issue with them. But in looking at them for first glance, it does need to be, uh, conforming to the new city charter.
Sure.
But I would recommend if you are going to convene a committee, yes, you need a group of five or six individuals that are going to make recommendations to the city council. Um, but that you do a holistic look and not just amend one of the items.
Sure, I, I, I was, I think clarifying because I thought you had said that we need that committee to, you know, move forward. I just wanted to clarify. So if we move forward now, we won't be done until October, November, and then we're just going to have to turn around and do it again.
Correct.
Okay, that seems like a waste of time. Yeah, I'm twenty twenty three and also full citizen review committee for that.
Okay, Counselor Tracy?
What's, uh, city administrator bets, uh, what's, what's a staff impact on capacity for convening one of these, uh, convening a, a citizens committee, for instance?
It would be very difficult because it would require myself or the city recorder to be involved with that, or we would ask the city attorney to also be involved. So there is a significant impact. And again, when you're talking about, you haven't adopted twenty one and twenty two council goals, which we are currently working on. It could be a situation where we have to come back and modify our current work plan because this will now rise as a priority. Um, and I, I think that it would be better to wait until twenty twenty three simply because we do have four open positions and a new council will be coming on as well. Um, but it, there would be a severe staff impact.
Okay, thank you for that. I, I think given the possibility that we would have five open positions, I think I too would, would say that twenty twenty three is probably um, a better time to, to look at this. And I think it gives a, a full, almost a full new council the opportunity to be involved in it as well. So I would say that, uh, my, my personal preferences and not to burden the staff at this time, I don't see anything here that's, that's on fire, so to speak. Um, so I'm going to go with, uh, um, Counselor Hartman on that too, twenty twenty three and convening the citizen group as well.
And I'm a twenty twenty three person as well. It just seems ridiculous that we would duplicate it again in just a couple of months. So, yes.
Sorry, thank you. I'm just curious, um, are we able to promote the subcommittee like ahead of time to get that going so that we can start as soon as January hits? Or is that something that does have to wait?
No, I think that we could go ahead and start the advertising in the fall and make sure that starting in January, my only concern is that if there is a majority of new elected officials that decide this isn't a priority. But I think, I think we should go ahead and advertise and try to get a committee going sooner rather than later. So in January, they're ready to go.
Okay, yeah, I think this would be a really great opportunity to also get some youth involved as well. And maybe we can, it, the sooner we start promoting, the sooner we can make those connections. I just wanted to ask that. Thank you.
Counselor Garlington?
I was just going to say, I like the idea that, uh, Counselor Hartman had in that when we're asking everyone to step up towards the end of the year to fill in seats that are, have become vacant, it would be a good time for people to maybe dip their toes in twice.
So are you still do it this summer or move it to twenty twenty three?
I'm all about twenty twenty three.
Okay.
Yeah.
Counselor Ripley, do you want to change to twenty twenty three or stick with the summer?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I think the key is having it be done by people other than the counselors.
Okay, and then Counselor Todd?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that too. My concern was the recruitment because sometimes that just continues to go on and on and on, and then it could be to June of twenty twenty three. So I'm fine with that.
All right, so it sounds like you have direction on the first item.
Thank you.
Did you have any other questions on that item?
I think that, uh, resolves all of item number nine.
Okay, perfect. Um, next is item ten, which is appointment to the Gladstone Park and Rec Advisory Committee. Staff.
In your packet, you have one application, Martha Parentoni, that would like to be on the Park and Recreation Advisory Board. She's got some great history and experience that will add to the diversity of the group. And if you have any other questions, staff can answer them.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Counselor Garlington?
Not I.
Counselor Ripley?
Is there no residence, uh, residency timeline?
There is none. We, we checked into that. Thank you.
Nothing else? Okay, Counselor Todd?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Counselor Alexander?
No questions.
Counselor Hartman?
No questions.
Counselor Tracy?
No questions.
All right, and I didn't have any questions. So would somebody like to make a motion to appoint Martha Parentoni to the Parks and Rec Board?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Since we only have one person, we'll just do a roll call vote. That's what I was assuming. Okay. Motion was made by Counselor Hartman, seconded by Counselor Garlington to appoint Martha Parentoni to the Park and Rec Advisory Board. Any other questions or concerns? Could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Aye.
Counselor Hartman?
Aye.
Counselor Todd?
Aye.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes, so if you're watching this, welcome to the Parks and Rec Board. It's awesome. All right, next is item number eleven, which is appointment to the City of Gladstone Planning Commission. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor. In your packet, you have two applications. Your staff report refers to one who was submitted by Patrick Smith. The second one did come in after the deadline, but we wanted to go ahead and walk that on, and that is Nicole Gossett Roxbury. And so you have two applicants for one position. And the city recorder will ask each individual counselor who their choice is.
So you did, you didn't give us copies of that second one in our packet?
It was.
Came in after.
It was after, so we didn't get a copy of it, other than.
We emailed it to us.
Okay, what was her name again?
Nicole Gossett Roxbury.
Gossett Roxbury.
And it is posted on the website with the council packet.
All right. Okay, so we have two to consider. Do you want to do just, oh, you got it up already. Anybody have any questions for staff? Nope, go ahead and do a roll call vote, please, or this kind of a vote.
Okay, Counselor Garlington?
Gossett Roxbury.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Todd?
I did read.
Smith? Counselor Hartman?
Uh, Smith?
Counselor Tracy?
Pat Smith.
Counselor Alexander?
Patrick Smith.
Counselor Ripley?
Smith.
Mayor Stimple?
Smith. So welcome back, Pat Smith, to the planning commission. And that's only until the end of this year. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. So next is business from the audience. Um, each person has three minutes to speak. Our governing body takes the input of our citizens into consideration. However, in order to comply with Oregon Public Meetings laws, this isn't a time for dialogue, but instead of time for us to listen, our city administrator and clerk are taking notes in case an item requires further action. Could you please call him up?
We have one, Jerry Blakeney. Yes.
Uh, I wanted to thank, uh, the staff for hanging in there. Uh, I wanted to thank city attorney Jacobs, uh, Anessa Hartman, Tracy Todd, and Matt Tracy for seemingly showing up for the community. I appreciate that. Now I'm going to address the committee, the people that actually listened to this. I'm going to turn around and pretend I'm Tammy Stimple and not pay attention. Um, we have three, uh, councillor seats that are opening up and a mayor seat that's opening up. And I don't live in the city of Gladstone, so I cannot apply nor do I necessarily.
So they want to. Promise. Oh, sorry. Nor do I necessarily want to, but I will help anyone who wants to run for, uh, city council who is interested in helping the city of Gladstone. If you're tired of the politics and the bickering and the fighting, seek me out. Uh, it's not too hard. People have Googled me and found me. You, Greg, which brings a tear to my eye, but seek me out and I'll help you, uh, win. If, uh, there's a fit there, right? If it makes sense, if you are there for the, uh, city. There are people in this community who show up, but there are also a lot of people who don't show up because of all the infighting that has happened under the current leadership of the city council. How am I doing on time? Woo, a minute left. That's not this, right? That's not picking battles. That's not me fighting with Tammy. I've received the feedback from the commit, community that maybe that's not the best use of my time. So instead, I'm willing to dedicate my time to make sure that, uh, you have a fighting chance to get on the city council. So if you're listening, uh, or you want to run, please seek me out and I can help you out. That being said, I wanted to thank the, uh, staff, city attorney Jacobs, Anessa Hartman, Tracy Todd, and Matt Tracy. I'll pause there for a second. And Matt Tracy, because I don't think we've given you justice for the attacks that you've received. Thank you very much for your service. I appreciate it. Now, uh, for Counselor Garlington, Mayor Stimple, Counselor Alexander, and Counselor Ripley. I also have to give you all thanks as well because you show up. There's a whole lot of people in this city who aren't. I think there's reasons for it other than them being lazy or whatever, but you all show up. So, thank you. I appreciate the time that you do serve the community. There are three to five people to eight people that talk every month, and you all give them three minutes of your time. Those are the people you should be leaning on for your committees, for your boards. Okay, I had a past counselor reach out to me and ask me to apply to a board. I know, Tammy, I'm sorry, I'll make this quick. And that's what you all should be doing. The people who come here are the people who will serve on your boards and volunteer for you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, next is business from the council. We'll start with Counselor Garlington.
Um, okay, so I have a couple of things. Number one, they, we, this group belongs to a another group called the League of Oregon Cities, and Counselor Hartman and I have gotten involved. Well, she's, I'll let her talk about the other one that she's involved with because they've asked us to promote it. And so I'm not talking to just everyone that's sitting in this room, but rather other councils and other people that are elected officials, um, that serve, uh, roles within city government. And one of the small, I mean, there's just so many things to get involved with it with the League of Oregon Cities, but one of the things that I've gotten involved with, thanks to Counselor Hartman, is the Women's Caucus, and they've been established to bring elected officials together for mentorship, conversation, team building, friendship, and much, much more. If you are an elected official, I really urge you to seek that, this group out and/or the group that I'm asking you to kind of drop, name drop as well. So, um, it's, it's a, a great group of people, uh, a lot of good people to lean on. And, um, if you're thinking about running for office, you know, give me a call because it may not be somebody on this board that you want to talk to, but rather somebody from a different board or a different council that you can get some insight from. And honestly, I wish I'd have found this, you know, a year and a half ago, but it's okay. I mean, it's moving forward and we're learning a lot. And I'd like to say that we get a chance to mentor a little bit too. So it's been a very good, um, a, a really, a really good group to be gone, uh, to be along with. Um, the nature park plant sale was a great success, in my opinion. Uh, the highlight is to show off our awesome park up at the nature park. I'm very proud of it. I'm not going to, you know, mince words about that. And we got to meet so many great neighbors. People came up with lists of exactly what they wanted of native plants, and they were ready to buy them. And they, they got, you know, they get people up there that they just start talking to people. They learn where to plant them and how to do things. And I'm just thinking, yes, this is what we need. We need conversation. We want to meet people. We want to work side by side with people because that's how you get to know people. So that was really good. The can, Pancake Breakfast was a really good community event. We were there for, I don't know, three or four hours, all for a fourteen second egg hunt, which was an enormous amount of fun, and the kids had a great time. And there was so many proud parents. And, you know, I especially love the ones, it's kind of like Halloween when they have one grandchild and grandma and grandpa there and grandma and grandpa there and mom and dad are there and then the little one. And it's just a lot of fun, a lot of fun pictures. The city did a great job with it. The Rotary did a fantastic job putting together the Pancake Breakfast and everything that they did. And everybody, I believe, that showed up felt welcome. The high school kids and the junior high kids that were there, um, doing different musical activities. Thank all of, I thank all of them. Um, you know, it's, it was just a really good time to see people come together and Gladstone has stepped up since COVID. We've made it happen. We've worked it forward and people are moving to make things happen for everyone in the community. So I really appreciate that. The Clackamas County Library Board passed a budget this last month, uh, to send on to the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners. And, um, you could, uh, look them up if you'd like to get deeper. And, um, you could, uh, look them up if you'd like to get deeper into that, but I doubt it. So, uh, with that being said. Uh, there's a lot of people out there that are asking about our library. How is it getting built? When are we going to get that started? Clackamas County Board of Commissioners is having a meeting tomorrow beginning at 11 o'clock, correct? Okay. Um. It's on Zoom. You can turn it on and not have to pay attention to it. Nobody, nobody will get to talk. But you will get to hear. You will hear everything that we get to hear and you'll know exactly what we know all at the same time. So I urge everyone who is interested in the library to get on, just turn that Zoom on in your background and at 11 o'clock, you can hear it all. The training event on April 27th was both inform, uh, informative and enlightening. And I want to thank the city for the invitation to, uh, to the council. And, um, I appreciate being included in that. Uh, Memorial Day is coming up, the end of the month. Uh, be safe, travel safe. It is a day that we will remember those who died in war. It was originally called Decoration Day because the soldiers would decorate graves of their fallen comrades. So. That little tiny bit of history. And that's all I had to say. And everyone have a great month.
All right. Counselor Ripley.
I got nothing.
All right. Counselor Todd.
Um, I wanted to find out about the League of Cities Women's Caucus. I, because I did sign up for, to get some information on that. What day of the week is that?
Uh, actually it's the, our next meeting is the 17th of May. It's a Tuesday. It's always the third Tuesday of the month.
Right. Okay. And that could be anybody who's an elected official even or, or an appointed person, somebody who's unplanning.
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was wondering about that. Um, it was really easy to sign up. And staff. Okay. Um, it was really easy to get information. I think it's Jamie Hefter.
Yes.
Yeah. Is, send her a quick email and she got right back to us. Okay. So you're going to be hearing about the festival a lot from me. Just going to say. And, um, right now, as of yesterday, the form, if you would like to register to be in the parade. If you're a baton twirler, if you want to decorate your bicycle, whatever, it's, it's that's, it's. Bunch of neighborhood kids decorating their bikes go. Um, if you have a small business, if you have neighborhood friends that want to, one year they did a pirate ship. And they just all played a part. It was one whole neighborhood that did that. So that is on the official website, which is, uh, gladstonecommunityfestival.org. And. There is, uh, we asked for a $10 donation and we asked for that just because. The, the, the big sort of bands that we get to be in there, the once, once around band or whatever, we actually have to pay them to be in our parade. And they use our parade money that we pay them to go on to bigger ones throughout, um, the US and, and other places. So. So that is it for right now. But if anybody has any questions. It is Saturday, August 6th. Starts promptly at 10:00. I'm a taskmaster with that and it's about a mile. So. It ends up with Max Patterson. But if anybody has any questions or wants to be involved, let me know.
Yeah. And don't drive down along Portland Avenue or any of the side streets that day because you will be stuck. All right. Counselor Alexander.
Uh, not much. Just, uh, wanted to say for people to keep an eye out for the Community Police Academy coming up in a couple of months. So you can get your application in. Maybe get on that. And, um, if you get a council packet, something that's really fun to do, I like to do is you, you go to the, the, the. Chief Schmerber's report and you try to figure out where Nana is. And then, you know, he can get a prize and then it gets you, let you know where places are in Gladstone. That's sort of fun. And that's all I got. Have a good month.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Hartman.
Thank you. I wanted to say Counselor Garlington, uh, the Women's Caucus is only, you know, five months old. So you wouldn't have had it a year and a half ago anyways. But you're a part of something historic, which is great. Um, I attended my first, uh, senior center meeting. And the only thing I have to report is that they are looking for donations of flowers and plants for their garden. So if anyone has that ability to do that or give a gift card, they will kindly accept that. I had an opportunity to attend, um, the three counties DEI directors put on a, um, gathering with Dr. John Powell. And they talked about targeted universalism, which I had never heard of before. And I suggest you look it up. Again, it's targeted universalism and it's a way of looking at DEI work, um, as an inclusive space, uh, for all people. And I thought that was really interesting and I learned quite a bit from that. Um, what, what else did you want? What did you want me to say? Oh, the, so the other organization is the League of Oregon Cities People of Color Caucus. Same, similar, um, similar organization as the Women's Caucus. Uh, also open to all folks who are city staff on boards and whatnot. So. And that's, that's all I got.
All right. Counselor Tracy.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as usual, we get this wonderful, um, city council packet that's, uh, also a departmental report every month. And I go through this, um, fairly regularly, take a look at everything. I, I, once again, you know, the seven of us sit up here. I think there's seven of us. Lose count. Uh, and, and we meet once a month and we do things. I mean, there are plenty of people active in the communities. But I like to turn the focus back to the staff again. It occurred to me today while I'm kind of going through different neighborhoods, uh, over the last couple of days, actually, I started to realize like just what our city is like, um, to the community. We're a fairly safe city. We have, um, competent fire department, competent police department, public works, uh, department that's trying to catch up. I mean, the photographs, uh, speak for themselves. So I, I like to, in, it's not me out there shaking hands. I'd like to just go ahead and continue recognizing the staff. You guys have done a fantastic job over two years. Of probably the hardest history any of us who are alive today have ever witnessed. Uh, and so it just occurs to me that as I come down my street and I see that people are moving out, they're selling their houses, taking advantage of the market. And there are new people moving in, including right next door to me. Um, and my new neighbors who are coming here from someplace else and who commented on how nice the city is and how nice the neighborhood is. You know, how clean and how people are reaching out to them and saying, hey, you know, uh, if you need some help, uh, I'm here to help you. So again, I want to reflect the focus back on the staff. The city staff in this city have been outstanding over two years of pressure. Uh, I'm getting, I'm nearing the end of my term and happily so, but I want to go back. It's every time I look at these reports and see the work that you all do, you all do, uh, and the public work staff, Darren's team. It just blows my mind that they're able to keep us on track with such a limited budget and keep the city in the shape that it's in. And react as, uh, the police department often does because we get sandwiched and events carry on into our, uh, our region, uh, the fire department as well. No one can, outside of our cities, I don't speak to other city officials or other folks who say, oh, Gladstone's terrible. No, they say that we're there, we're on target, we're on button, we're, we're always there and supporting them. So. I just want to give everybody the kudos for that. I think it's important for us to continue recognizing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Um, I'm last. Um, first, the food pantry is open from 3:00 to 5:30 on Thursdays at the Hillside Christian Fellowship Church off Blenecko. We're located in the back by the port, in the portables and there's not a whole lot of signage. So just drive into the parking lot in the rear and we're in the portable. The number of families and homebound seniors we serve grows every week and we're seeing the impacts inflation is having on these families. We're getting a lot more families. We're getting a lot less food. So the food shortage, we're seeing it already from the Oregon Food Bank. So if you would like to volunteer, drop off donations, we would gladly accept them. Um, I'm there on Wednesdays from 2:00 to 3:30 with the prep crew. So if you wanted to swing by that date, that's, that's perfect. We can go ahead and stock the stuff that you drop off. And again, we need volunteers desperately because we're looking at maybe, um, expanding to two days a week instead of just the one day a week. Um, there are a couple of statements that were made in the media that I'd like to comment on. And the only reason that I'm commenting on it is because I have been fielding. Many conversations and phone calls, concerned citizens that can't believe that we put our city in, um, the situation that we apparently did. So, um, first, um, this was specifically an article in the Clackamas Review on April 19th regarding the agreement with Clackamas Fire. First, there was a quote by Counselor Garlington that stated, I don't want anyone to have to call 911 for a family member and not have it answered. That would not have happened. I don't want our citizens to think that we would ever have put them in that situation. Mutual aid agreements guarantee that if our Gladstone firefighters were on another call and outside agency would step in and cover it. Thankfully, Clackamas Fire is always there. Second was the statement that Gladstone was previously an island of inadequate fire service provided by the city. Our fire department served our community for over a hundred years, saving lives and property. They are completely committed to our citizens and our city. Going above and beyond over and over again, providing a seamless and professional response. To now say it was inadequate is incorrect. Our firefighters deserve our respect and our heartfelt thank you for all the work that they have done for our community. And not a statement dismissing their efforts. I want to thank them and say that you are so valued and our citizens will not forget that. Our next meetings are May 24th at 5:30, which will be the city council work session. And June 14th at 6:30 will be our next regular city council meeting. That's it. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion was made to adjourn by Counselor Tracy, seconded by Counselor Hartman. Do we have any questions or concerns? Could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Hi.
Counselor Hartman.
I.
Counselor Todd.
I.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes. Meeting's adjourned at 7:31 PM. Thank you, everybody.